So I will call a special meeting for September 29, 2021 to order and pursue into section 42 of the executive order issued by Governor Newsom. Cities allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of Republican observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to meeting telephonically, please call 1-669-968-33. Meeting ID 811-1858-2184, past code 788155, or through the city's live webcast on YouTube Connect with TC. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Yu?
Here. So next slide is public comment, and for those of you who called in, and I don't see anybody calling in. So are there any email comments, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Yu, there are no email public comments or requests to speak.
Okay, I will close public comment. Now, the council will recess to a closed session. The purpose is conference of labor negotiator. I guess we'll just stay on, right? Okay.
Sorry, we're gonna put you in a breakout room.
Okay.
Recording stopped.
So we rejoined the regular, well, we joined a special council meeting. Mr. City Manager or Mr. Attorney, could you please report out for us?
Yes, sir, be happy to. The city council did meet in closed session with the labor negotiator and discussed items of labor negotiation, but no reportable action was taken this evening. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next slide of which new business. And which is discussion and possible adoption of resolution to allow city council meetings to be held remotely consistent with Assembly Bill 361. Mr. City Manager?
I was muted, sorry, sir. Thank you, Mayor Yu, members of the council. I will let, Mr. Murphy will start off to give you some legal context as to the decision that's before you tonight, and then I will provide you with some contextual context in terms of the individual findings related to a resolution if you so choose to make those findings tonight. So with that, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Brian. So, as you know, we have been meeting originally under an executive order issued in 2020, more recently under executive order N-08-21, as the mayor announces at the beginning of the meetings. And those executive orders allow local government entities to meet remotely by telephonic or video conference means. N-08-21 is due to expire at the end of the day tomorrow, and the California Legislature, in its wisdom, passed a bill, Assembly Bill 361, that would continue to allow remote meetings to take place. In order for there to be remote meetings, the state or a county, if the county has the responsibility to do so, would have to declare a state of emergency. The county or another appropriate local jurisdiction would have to have put in place distancing rules, like the social distancing we have today. And then finally, the city council would meet to make findings that it would be unsafe for any variety of reasons to hold meetings in person. Upon making those findings, which we have laid out in the attached resolution, you can be allowed to continue meeting remotely or to start meeting remotely if it were a different time in the future. One thing to note is that, under Assembly Bill 361, the remote meetings are good for 30 days. And at the end of 30 days, you have to make the findings again, revisit the facts. Some of them are very easy, right? If the state has issued a continuing declaration of emergency, well, that's gonna stay in place. And as soon as it's not in place, then our ability to meet remotely evaporates. If there are not social distancing rules, or if for some reason, City Hall, your council chambers are not fit for meeting, then, you know, you could make the local findings. There are a couple of big changes in terms of moving forward that I wanted to, you know, kind of lay out for you and for the public so that anybody listening understands the changes that you'll see if the council decides to make the findings and move forward. Obviously, we still have to give notice of the meeting. The public has to be allowed access to the meeting via call-in option or through Zoom itself. That's not the biggest deal for Temple City because you have been doing that. Some entities continue to require emails to be submitted, and those emails are simply read. But in the future, under Assembly Bill 361, emailed public comments will go back to what they were prior to COVID-19, which is they're delivered to you either via email by staff or they're printed and packaged for you. And you can read them at your leisure, but email comments would no longer be read. There's some vague statutory language that I know Councilmember Chavez and I will probably discuss. It says that "The meeting must be conducted in a manner that protects the statutory and constitutional rights of the parties and the public appearing before the legislative body." It's very unclear what that means. It's sort of a nice broad statement. There are some attorneys who have said that what it will mean is that when we stream this or broadcast our meetings, what the public will see is what we see here, which is each other's faces live rather than the screenshots that the city's been using. That's not definite, but it is something that Mr. Cook and I would have to talk about and talk about best practices as things evolve. A major issue is that if there's a disruption to the meeting broadcast or even a disruption to the ability to take call-in public comment, then we have to stop the meeting. Can't continue the meeting, or we can't go on with the meeting, and we'll have to continue the meeting to a different day. As well, there must be, and again, it's a legal term, there must be reasonable time for public comment. What exactly that means, we don't know. But it does seem to mean that you have to say, "We now open this for public comment, and instead of just seeing if anyone's on the line, give them a minute or two to get on the line." If they've been listening and they're trying to find the phone number to call, you have to give them a few minutes to do that. Slows the meeting down a little bit, but it protects the public's rights of due process. And then, as I said, we have to approve a resolution making the findings every 30 days, which we would just simply line up to do at your second meeting of the month. Each month, we bring it back to you and see whether you would be continuing to make the findings or not. Those are kind of the practical impacts from a legal perspective. The findings are in attachment A, and if we need to discuss them, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And now I'll turn it over to the city manager for sort of, you know, operational impacts.
Before we go there, may I ask a question?
Of course, sir.
That the state's, Governor Newsom's state of emergency declaration is still in effect, right?
It is in effect until tomorrow with respect to the Brown Act. Oh, I'm sorry, the declaration of emergency, yes, sir, is in effect. And until he affirmatively repeals it, it will stay in effect. His executive order about the Brown Act is what expires tomorrow.
I understood. But I said in, I think somebody alluded to earlier that we can make a finding, well, the finding can be based, could be, based on the governor's declaration of emergency of COVID-19.
Yes, sir. I think that's still in place. That, yes, it is a mandatory finding that either the state, or if it's a localized emergency, the county has issued a declaration of emergency that is in effect.
Yeah, the county's emergency decree is still in place.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Yu, members of the council. Just a couple add-ons as the discussion that you, Mayor, and the city attorney just had are implicit in the decision-making process related to making the findings. The other findings that we're making to, I would say, provide justification or defensible justification would be the CDC still has LA County, even though the state of California is no longer a high transmission rate, community transmission rate county. It's still that, at least for the time being. And we spoke a little bit in the resolution about some of the conditions of the facility itself. We have made some, as some of you have seen, we have made some accommodations and some measures. But it is not a, it is an enclosed facility. So that will require, in terms of social distancing, the amount of participants that we can actually have in the council chambers, and also to length of time that you're in that building for that period of time with the ventilation system that we have. We've done a lot to mitigate risk, and we have mitigated risk to what, for an enclosed space, but it does not eliminate risk. And so those, some of the findings and some of those conditions. So if you have any other operational questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. That would conclude our presentation, Mayor Yu.
Okay. Let's go around the council, asking council members if they have questions. Perhaps I'll just use the, what I see on my screen. Starting with Councilmember Mann, any questions for?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Yu. Are we equipped to? Because I've seen cities that have, I guess, like a hybrid council meetings, where, like I think City of Rosemead at some point had some where some members were in chambers and others were remote. I know I've only done that once, but it was because I was on a conference somewhere. But I was like, I called in and I remember everyone said it was weird because it sounded like my voice was coming from above or something like that. But do we have that capability? And does that clash with any of these requirements from the latest legislation? You're on mute, Brian.
Sorry, I would defer to Mr. Murphy first on the legal aspects of holding a hybrid. Operationally, it is a little bit more difficult for us, to be quite frank. And we've talked about it internally. We haven't really explored it to the greatest depth that we could. We would have to take a little bit more time to really see if that was a viable option. But in terms of the legal ramifications of a hybrid under this context, I'd have to defer to Mr. Murphy.
Sure, so the operational partly answers your question as to whether we can do it. Legally, we believe it would be acceptable, but that the best practice would be that the members of the council who were in the council chambers would continue to have their laptops or their iPads in front of them and would be on their own Zoom feed so that the public could see them, the public watching from home would see them the same way that they would see the members who were in remote locations. It would take a lot of muting and unmuting so that there wasn't feedback. But it's certainly doable. And in fact, I was part of a similar situation in another city over the summer. So I know that it can be done. I also know, as Mr. Cook said, it does put a lot of strain on the people in the room. But it is something that can be done if it's the will of the council.
No, I appreciate that answer. My second question is, in the recommendation, there's, it says we could either adopt the attached resolution or take no action. If we take no action, does that mean everyone's, like, what does that mean?
If, thank you, sir. If you take no action, then you will no longer be meeting remotely. You'll revert back to in-person meetings, and it would be starting Friday morning. And that would be all of your meetings, you know, meeting with the sheriff, planning commission, et cetera. Every official city meeting would be back to in-person.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to hear from you. Okay, thanks. That's all my questions for now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on, Councilmember, Councilmember Viscara, do you have any questions?
I'm muted, sir.
There you go.
Yeah, okay. I'm not quite ready for questions yet. Although, did you, everybody look at the room? See how? I know William did, because he and I were there at the same time. And it's pretty impressive. I think it's pretty limited, too. So, I don't know. I think I'll lay back here for a while.
Okay. Let's see here. Councilmember Chavez?
Questions? Thank you, Mayor Yu. The report, or at least the resolution, mentioned that the council chambers allow only for 19 members of the public to be present at any one time. Does that, does that number include council and staff? Or is that not include council and staff?
I believe that includes council and staff. But Brian, Mr. Azumi, are you on the line? Do you remember? Because he's been our guru on all this.
Yeah, the 19 seats is only for the members of the public. This does not include the occupancy of staff and council members.
Yeah, so that doesn't, that number obviously doesn't, doesn't include the five of us and city manager and city attorney, right? So theoretically, we could put 19 butts in the seat in the city council chambers and still allow for social distancing. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All right. Thank you. And my question maybe for Greg. Can we limit attendance and require proof of vax to attend a council meeting live?
I don't require proof of vaccination because of constitutional right.
Before you answer, before I bring that up, you mentioned paragraph three, which, you're right, is a very broad and probably would not stand judicial review legislative, typical legislative language. But under this circumstance, I could see that limiting attendance and require proof of vax certainly would go a long way to meeting this, that the meeting be conducted to protect the constitutional rights of the parties and the public hearing before the legislative body. So, I mean, wouldn't that fall into that definition?
Well, the concern is that the constitutional right is, you know, right of due process and right to appeal to the government to redress your grievances. And if you're not allowing someone in because they're not vaccinated and you're not giving them the option to wear a mask and wear a face shield, for example, the concern is that that could give rise to a constitutional claim. Who knows how these are going to roll out over time? I really can't predict what will come from that language. But we certainly would want, you know, we'd want to limit the number of people in the room. But then, and this goes back to Councilmember Mann's point, if we're limiting the number of people in the room, we may have to have some kind of hybridized call-in option if we have a, an issue of major public attention and more than 17 people want to speak. So that does create, does create operational issues for us.
Yeah, well, first of all, I think most of us would agree that unless we have, unless we're talking about changing the lanes on Las Tunas or putting bike lanes in or a homeless shelter, we rarely have 19 people at any one meeting. Or if we're recognizing a Little League team or soccer team or boys' camp or girls'. So I, from a logistical standpoint, I don't know that that would concern me that much. And second of all, get to your point about the hybrid. We've been conducting hybrid meetings with California JPIA for about four months now, and they work very well. There are really no glitches. People who want to attend may. People who don't want to attend can still do it by Zoom. And we see them very well and hear them very well. I haven't experienced any problems. So if that were, if that were maybe something that we would consider, then I think talking to them and figuring out how they do it, certainly they don't have a, I'm sure they would be more than willing to share that information with us. I don't see why we couldn't adopt that as well, so. And let's see, I don't know if I have any other questions. Nope, that's all the questions I have now.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Moving on to Mayor Protem Sternquist. Do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, I want to circle back to Councilmember Viscara. Do you have any, now you have, get your thoughts? Or do you have any questions now?
I think the answer is obvious, but the hybrid is applying only to the public, not to the elected officials. The elected officials have to be on site, right?
I have seen both. If Chavez was saying was that JPIA is doing both.
You kind of broke up, Greg.
I apologize, sir. I have seen both, and I believe Councilmember Chavez in describing the JPIA was saying that some members of the board were coming in hybrid. Is that correct, Councilman?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
Okay, well, actually, you know, I'm glad you asked that question because I have a follow-up question to that. Maybe both Mr. Murphy or Councilmember Chavez can answer. My understanding is before all this remoteness was allowed, in order for a council member to be seated somewhere else or virtually, they need to be in a room where the posted agenda needs to be ADA accessible and have, need to leave his door open. So would that still apply if we were to do a hybrid? And one of us decided that we're, we feel more comfortable doing it from home because we're not as, for whatever reason, we just feel uncomfortable. Would that apply, though?
It does not. The revision to Section 54953 subdivision or subsection E of the Brown Act does eliminate that agenda posting and public access requirement so that, no, if you're in your home, you don't have to allow the public into your home. If you're, you don't have to be within the jurisdiction. You can be outside the jurisdiction. A majority can be outside the jurisdiction if that's where you are at the time of the meeting. So for, for most purposes applicable to you, things will continue on as they've been going. For some purposes of staff and for the way that the mayor will run the meeting and what we need to look at in terms of disruptions to the meeting, disruption, technological disruptions, and in giving the public extra time to speak, those are the big changes that you would see.
Okay. If they are, if there are no more questions from the council, I will open up for public comments. I don't see any public calling in, but I believe there is, Madam Clerk, an email public comment tonight?
Yes, Mayor Yu, may I read it?
Yeah, please.
Okay, "Good evening, Mayor Yu and council members. My name is Osama Nimri, a resident of Temple City. As you know, the top of the land legislature, the Senate and Congress are now meeting in person, and so are many other governing bodies all over the nation and states. Even though it might be preferable and more convenient to the council, staff, and others using the advanced virtual technologies, I strongly believe it's not convenient for a wide range of citizens of the city for one reason or another. Almost all business services, coupled with the existing protection protocols established by the CDC, are open for an in-person services. I have been listening to council virtual meetings, if possible, since its adoption earlier this year. I have noticed that during public comments and other discussion items during most of the meetings are mostly not going through. For example, I heard the clerk mention that there are one, two, or more citizens on the line waiting to make a comment. They suddenly lost and disappear when asked to unmute their microphone. And sure, I believe it's time to go live in person with the established safety protocols and bring back a better participation by the public and the feeling of the human encounter. Obviously, the sooner the better. Thank you, Osama Nimri."
Right, thank you, Mr. Nimri. Are there any more email comments, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, then I will close public comments. Time for council comments or any questions. Again, I'll go back to Councilmember Mann.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Yu. I think my general sentiment is, well, after I visited the council chambers recently, at least from my perspective, I believe staff has done the best that they could to make council chambers as safe as practically possible, sort of maybe cutting open one side of a wall to allow for a massive air filtration unit that exchanges outside air into the chambers. So from that angle, and also maybe I'm also a little biased because, at least from the county side of my work, there's obviously a push for people to return to the office. Circumstances are a little different. Our council chambers are a lot smaller, I understand that. I'm open to returning to council chambers in person. I think the comments that I've received and I think we've heard from time to time, I do believe the lack of an in-person meeting does affect public participation in an advert. And I think, you know, technologically, there's always going to be challenges with remote meetings that are unavoidable and are likely easier to be resolved in person. However, at the same time, I do understand that the, the whole concept of risk of COVID-19 and the transmissibility, all of that is constantly evolving, changing. And we all have a different perception of that. And I personally want to be respectful of what my fellow council members think. So to that extent, I would support adopting the resolution to continue remote meetings if that's the will of the council. My preferred way is if we could have a way to do a hybrid, just because I've seen other agencies do it so that council members that do want to be in chambers have that option to do so. But the, the remote meeting is not taken away from those who prefer to attend the meeting in that manner. And since, well, from what I heard, this applies to all city meetings, right? So by extension, that means the sheriff's meeting that we had today would have to fall under these same rules and guidelines and any other, I guess, special meeting that we would have. In my own little ideal fantasy world, we could somehow hold all of our council meetings out in the park. But there are obviously technological challenges to that that would be unreasonable. But, because it seems like, at least my understanding of the science behind it all was if you're outdoors, the risk of transmission drops significantly. And it's really the indoor setting that is most concerning. So if only we had that, that option. But thank you, that's my comments.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Viscara.
Yeah, I have mixed feelings. Yeah, I, I, I have mixed feelings. Um, one of the things that still gives me pause is the variant. And the fact that, uh, our, our numbers, although good for considering what's happening in the country, they're not really that good and we have, uh, a, a ways to go yet. By the way, do we know how many, how many entities are, are meeting in person and how many are meeting virtually? Greg, do you have the idea?
Uh, Brian, you might have polled it a little bit. I can only go anecdotally.
We've done, we've only done a small regional poll, and I know the city of St. Gabriel at their next meeting is meeting virtually and then considering this at the same time. So they're still staying virtual. Rosemead, uh, is, it could be continued to do like a hybrid model as well. Dwardy, um, I believe is back in person. So it's, it, there's a few, but we didn't do a comprehensive survey, sir.
I tell you that Alhambra remains, uh, remote. And they'll be considering, um, considering a resolution. I know that Santa Clarita is in person. I, I know that the other two cities that I work with are both back in person uh, with varying levels of, of protections within the council chambers. So that, that's anecdotally what I have, um, within L.A. County. Uh, it seems as though there is a split. I, I can't say that there's, that one is, is stronger than the other, but uh, as opposed to maybe two months ago when it was rare to see people back in person. Um, you know, as the city manager just said, it, it, you, you're starting to see it move that direction. Uh, but there's good reason, as you said, sir, to think about the variant. Think about what happened last year around this time of year, and if you need to be cautious, please by all means be cautious.
Well, then I'll say that I think moving back to public meetings right now might be a little premature. And I, I'd like to continue as we are on a month-to-month basis. That's, that's, that's essentially where I'm at.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Chavez, what's your thoughts?
Okay, thank you. Um, hold on, let me get my stuff here. Okay, so for me, um, this is a question, I think, uh, two competing theories or maybe justifications. One, on the one hand, we have, as the legislature stated, an imminent safety risk to attendees. I think, uh, uh, we, we certainly recognize that. We recognize that in all the things we're doing in City Hall and all the protocols that we have been implementing is taking into account the risk to the attendee, our people who come into City Hall. And the same thing, of course, applies here if they come into the council chambers. So that's, that, to me, that's the one, that's on one side of the scale. However, the other side of the scale, there are two, two issues that I have. One, which we have seen this evening, is the difficulty that we have been having even with our technology today. I mean, we lose people for time periods. Um, you know, it's difficult sometimes to hear members speaking. Um, and this is not just something that occasionally happens. This is, this is happening every meeting. And it seems like it's getting worse to me. Second item though is, and probably maybe the most important to me as an elected official, is the continued and growing lack of community engagement that we have with our constituents. Now, I don't know whether they will feel comfortable coming to a council meeting or not live. Maybe they won't. But certainly they don't come to the remote meetings. I can't even remember last time we had somebody come to a meeting and make a statement. It's been a long time. Um, we simply are not providing access to local government that is, that should be, that should be, um, made. I mean, that is our major goal. That is our major service as elected officials is to provide that access, and we are not doing it, at least in my mind, not through this remote. But again, it is what it is. Saying that, however, okay, I understand and I recognize that we are trending in the right direction, at least as far as the virus is concerned. California is doing a fantastic job. Um, why that doesn't include L.A. County, but maybe it doesn't. I don't know. But overall, California is doing a great job. However, and, and Brian Cook knows this because we've talked about it many times uh, when I was the mayor, and that is we always tend to take one step forward and then two steps back, two steps back when it comes to handling this virus and what we're going to be doing. Um, I've always said that in the past, our lo-, not our local government, but certainly our state and federal seem to be always in a rush to judgment when things improve. Okay, you know, things get a little better. Oh, let's stop wearing masks. Uh, let's, let's stop, uh, you know, let's, let's people, let, let's people eat in restaurants inside. You know, we don't have to do everything outside. And then we see what the result of that is. We see surges, okay? Now, will that happen here? I don't know. It could. Um, and so with that in mind, even though given the difficulties that we're having, and, and at first I was, and I, I know I brought this up before, I was the first one probably to say we need to get back into the council chambers. And I think eventually we do, and I think we should. And I think that, uh, staff has done a fantastic job. If you haven't been to City Hall or gone to the council chambers, it looks great. And I would urge, I would ask our city attorneys to look into the question about further protocols as far as, uh, limiting attendance, where we can put them. Can we, can we require proof of vaccination or maybe even proof of, uh, a recent positive or negative test? You know, those type of things. Can we do it? If we can't, we can't. At least we should look into it. Okay, that would give us another added protection. But considering that we have a meeting already next Tuesday, okay? Again, maybe this is the time to say, okay, let's see where we go as a community. Let's see where we go as a, as a county, as a state. And if the numbers keep going in the direction that we think they're going to go, then we can always make this decision to go live in another thirty days. If you were to tell me, well, this is going to happen, this is going to matter, we're going to keep this the rest of the year, I would automatically say, no, I can't, I'm not going to do that. But I can live with another thirty days. Uh, I think staff would probably, probably be in favor of that as well, but at least that's my feeling. And again, the, the other comments I made have meant this to mean also that I think we're getting very, very, very close to getting back into chambers, and I think we should so that we can do our jobs and do them for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Protem Sternquist, uh, your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I miss being with our constituents, um, got to see a lot of them at concerts in the park and had the opportunity to speak to many of them and those that felt like being engaged with a council member surely did come up and talk to me some masked and some unmasked, which, you know, made me both happy to see them and obviously nervous to see those who chose to, you know, pull down their mask and want to give a hug. And so, you know, it's difficult because I don't want to get sick. I don't want anybody else to get sick. And I think in light of that, we just did a mandate or, or voted towards having a mandate to, you know, take back to our unions that, um, you know, that this is something that we feel strongly about. We don't have in that same type of issue that we can ask for with, um, as Greg said, with our constituents coming into the council meetings who are not vaccinated. So it seems that those two things are totally, you know, opposite of, of what we want to do in protecting the public from coming to City Hall and you know, even us as council members, the union is asking us if we're vaccinated. So I think it, it needs to go both ways, and I think coming back in thirty days and revisiting this, especially as the weather gets colder, I'd hate to see another surge and we go back for one meeting and then we're back home again. So we just don't know what the winter and colder weather are going to bring with the Delta variant or another variant that might pop up. But I will say that five organizations that I belong to just recently voted. And overwhelmingly, SCAG, Foothill Transit, Mosquito and Vector Control, um, what are the other ones? Sanitation District, and I'm forgetting one of them, but all of them voted to stay virtual. And all of them are compromised of elected officials throughout the eighty-eight cities in the county. Um, when I look at that, I think, okay, if all of them representing so many different cities are overwhelmingly voting to stay virtual and look, looking at this in another thirty days, then I think maybe that's the best way for us to go also. And that's all I have to say.
Right, thank you. Um, I, I, I too agree with everything been said, um, that that's need to be a delicate balance between protecting the public, uh, protecting staff and, uh, protecting the officials who might attend. Um, I, I do, so without repeating everything been said, I think that we are probably a bit premature. And I agree with, uh, Councilmember Chavez saying that, uh, we tend to react very fast. When, you know, like, uh, last year when things were going well and all of a sudden everybody was talking about, or only a few months ago, uh, e- 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 everything was, let's open up everything and then, uh, Delta hit us and everything shut down again. So I think it will be prudent for us to wait a little bit and, and, um, and I agree to relook at this every thirty days or so and, and see where things are. So as much as we benefit from meeting, uh, I think we may not want to, um, uh, overreact so quickly at this point. So, um, so with that, um, I guess we need to take a vote, Mr. Murphy, to.
Yes, sir. The, the appropriate motion would be simply a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash five, 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 eight. A resolution proclaiming the continuing need to meet by teleconference.
Uh, Mayor Yu, may, may I ask one, one more question?
Absolutely.
Sorry, that's kind of, just to clarify, because I, I think I discussed this with, um, Mr. Cook before. Um, my, my understanding is, uh, I think you mentioned to me that moving forward under the, the new, um, assembly bill, um, our meetings moving forward have to be changed so that the audience is seeing what we're seeing, right? So does that mean our, our, our next meeting is going to be that way?
Yeah, that would, uh, I'll defer to Greg a bit, but that would be kind of in the spirit of what the legislation is looking for. So, um, for those who are not comfortable showing their backgrounds, we'll show you how to do a Zoom meeting with having a background or a blurred background. So we can't see what's in your individual homes or wherever locations of where you're participating.
Does, does that also mean members of the public who participate in that meeting will also, will also be able to see their faces?
I don't believe so, but.
We are, we are allowed under the law to continue to ha-, give them access by telephone rather than, uh, uh, video conference.
Oh, I see. That's all. Okay, so they're, they're only able to see it, but they're, they're not participating in, in the same way that we are.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Hmm? It's definitely, um, an improvement over the current situation, right? So, uh, with that, uh, any more questions? Otherwise we can, uh, entertain a motion.
Would make the motion the great iterated. I'm not sure I can remember it all.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before you get a second on that, I had a quick question. I was on mute and I couldn't get it off.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, Brian, do we have the, uh, air humidifiers, uh, in the chamber, uh, council chambers also?
Uh, Mr. Kugia, I'm mute.
Sorry. Uh, yes, we do have the HEPA filter filtration units in, uh, in the council chambers. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
So, uh, Mr. Councilmember Mann, you continue. Were you a second or did I hear?
I'll second.
Okay. So it's been moved by Councilmember Viscara and second by Councilmember Mann. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes.
So with that, uh, we will continue for another, uh, thirty, uh, for another month, thirty days.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll bring this back at your second meeting of October. Uh, so that we don't have to hold a special meeting and we'll just continue to do it every, every two months. Or I'm sorry, every two, every second meeting of the month, uh, until the council decides that you're, you know, the, the fact support going back. Um, and until then, we'll continue to bring you resolutions. So thank you very much for your discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. We, we reached the end of our agenda for the night. Um, so um, meeting is adjourned. Uh, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.